We are recording.
Thank you. See what time we have. Six o'clock. All right, six o'clock. Everybody ready to go? All right. Welcome, everyone. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2024. The time is six o'clock. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Just a reminder, if you're going to come forward and speak, speak directly into the microphone. This meeting is being recorded and provide your name and address for the public record. So at this time, I haven't called the meeting to order. I would look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from trustee Schneider to approve the evening's agenda and a second from trustee Romus. Is there any other comment or questions with regard to the agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. Okay. We are on to item number five. Item number five is public appearances. That's for any of you in the audience who wish to come forward and, as I said, share your name and your address and let us know what's on your mind. Be aware that this is reserved for items not on the agenda. If you are here for an item on the agenda, we'll give you every opportunity to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak to an item not on the agenda? Going once?
Please.
Okay. Hearing none. Consent agenda, item number six. This evening's consent agenda consists of previous minutes of the village board dated July 15th, 2024, and item B, June 2024 animal control report. Are there, is there any discussion or questions with regard to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from trustee Eckert, seconded by trustee Schneider, to approve the consent agenda as stated. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, we are off to item number seven. Item number seven this evening, administrative items. Item seven A is the discussion on trustee conduct as requested by trustee Andrews. All right, who has this one?
Well, then, I'm the one that asked for it, so I will start this by, according to a lot of information in our trustee manual and along with the code of ethics and things, there, in some of the comments that trustee Netto has made, well, one was the situation where he was, had a discussion with the president of the Howard Swamaco Historical Committee and made the threat about burning down the barn if he didn't do things better with the situation that happened that day. In our, in our handbook, I mean, it clearly states things like with workplace violence. "It is the policy of the village to prohibit and prevent any acts of threat or violence by any employee in or about any and all village facilities and properties." Well, the village owns that barn. You're making a threat about it. And the village will not condone any and all threats of violence against employees, customers, or visitors on village premises. And... And on the ethics. Then there's another section that said, "Employees shall not make threats or engage in violent or potentially violent behaviors, including but not limited to," and one was making threatening remarks. Along with another that says, "conduct that threatens, intimidates, coerces, or otherwise bullies another person." Well, and discussion with them and using follow language and stuff like that. And he's been talked to in the past about some of that kind of behavior. We thought we had that under control, but here it spikes up again. And a lot of that stuff's all under the anti-harassment policy. So I need to know where, where we lie with this. I mean, does other board members think this kind of behavior is acceptable? I don't think it's acceptable.
So I'm just gonna come out and say it. Did I say burn it down? Yeah, I did. I've been saying that term for over 30 years for something to disappear. And when you sat and listened to Tim Rasmussen talk, he came out and said, I told him I would contact each and every village trustee. This has been an ongoing issue for how many years? I'd get a ticket at my bar for someone off-premise, but it's okay to go on other people's property? You don't know what was said to me and what he said about our village citizens either. So you're interpreting burn it down how you would interpret it. That's half the problem inside this village. We have ordinances and we have laws to follow. They are not to be interpreted. If you want to interpret that, can you please write President-elect Donald Trump a letter? Because there is a commercial that Joe Biden had out, he said he was gonna burn down the White House. Is that physically what he meant?
Well, I'm talking about what we have in front of us.
And I'm, so I've been saying burn it down. I get empty on a bottle of booze that I'm pouring, or a bartender, and I say, burn it. Let's make it disappear. You are interpreting what I said.
I would have to interject here just a little piece. When you keep on referring to in your bar and you're doing your business, that is as a citizen, as a business owner, you are also now an elected official. And even though you've been using a term for X amount of years, doesn't mean that you can still use that term when people are viewing you in an official capacity. When you are, as a part of this board, for the, wherever term you are, and you are at someplace, you are not a citizen, you are not a business owner, you are an elected representative. And the words that we use are, you have to choose them very carefully. And I'm sure that you may have used it flippantly or whatever. I wasn't there, just like you said, I wasn't there. I can only go by what is in front. And as a trustee, you have a duty to be more cognizant of your words, your actions, even when you're not in your place of business.
Well, like you were saying, Mike, too, though, the thing, the problem I have with this is, I wasn't there, I wasn't in on this call. What he said and what the other person said is that hearsay? None of us have been there. Nobody knows the context of it. Nobody knows what was said, how was said. I, I don't know.
It's not hearsay because you had people actually who were there saying what they heard and what people had said, so.
Okay, but that conversation nonetheless was between two people over the phone, so...
I get what you're saying, and we have to take it, unfortunately, we can't be privy to every phone call, every, you know, as a legislative body, we have to look at what is in front of us and proceed accordingly. There are mechanisms in our handbooks that spell out what ethical conduct is and what it isn't. What you are to do and what you're not to do, and what the village won't stand up for. You are, as well as any of us, are bound by that guideline. I'm not saying that, you know, trustee Netto was right, wrong, or indifferent. I'm just saying, we have something here that we have to look into because people have said, well, what's going on? Our elected officials, you know, writing, you know, just doing whatever they want, or... And I think, I don't want to put words into trustee Andrews' mouth, but we need to have something more concrete and be held accountable for our actions. Am I correct?
Correct.
And that's all I'm, all I'm saying is, we have to judge by what, what is present and how do we go about it? We have mechanisms in which to deal with issues and to see if it truly is a worthy issue to go into or with something, something flippant.
I'll add one other thing in our handbook under employee responsibilities. I mean, as board members, we're employees at a village yet. So, and it says, "Each employee, including elected officials and supervisors of the village, is responsible for assisting in the prevention of harassment." And this is kind of what that was. And I'm not gonna sit back and, knowing there was some potential issue there, and not do anything about it.
So I think that's the problem. I don't think we are employees of the village. I think we're elected officials, which is different. And the reason for that is we're selected by the voters of the village to hold an office. And at the end of the day, the voters of the village are the ones who decide whether or not we have performed up to their standards.
So that means we can do anything we want?
No. You can't commit a crime. You cannot violate ethics, but you're also not...
That's what we're talking about is ethics.
Well, the employee manual, though, is different. The employee manual is what governs the employees of the village.
But it says, "including elected officials." So all I can go by what's, is what's printed in here.
So I think I can provide some clarification on that. Certainly, your roles as elected officials is different than the roles of your hired staff. You are still expected, though, to comply with the...
I apologize, but just for the record, could we get your name, just?
I'm Ashley Lahaki.
Thank you.
And I'm here from town council law firm.
Thank you.
And now I've lost my train of thought. Sorry. I can't chew gum and walk at the same time. You, as elected officials, are still required to comply with the policies of the village. So you cannot be fired. You can't be terminated as an elected official, but you are still expected to, and I think that the handbook is clear, that the anti-harassment policy, for example, applies to you as well. So if you were to be in village hall and you were to see an employee harassing another employee, you would have the same duty to report that one of your hired staff members would have. But the repercussions for failing to do that are different. If that makes sense.
Could I ask you a question along those lines?
Sure.
Attorney Lahaki, and I do apologize for interrupting.
No, that's okay. I think I rebounded from it.
You did very well. So, so my question to you is this. So we have our code of ethics, which is in front of us, which we've established, I believe we've established that it applies to elected officials and staff as well. So in the event that we had a staff member who was publicly violating some of these maybe same areas of ethics, and we chose not to, and again, I'm saying it was publicly noticed or publicly heard in public, in village business, and we chose, as a village, as a village staff, authority, management board, not to prosecute, not to follow our ethics for that village staff member beyond the ethical aspects of it, what are the legal ramifications of that in terms of liability?
I think that it would depend to some extent on what the conduct concerned. If I am, if I am an employee of the village and somebody is harassing me, and you witness that, and you do not report it, I mean, there are other potential issues from a liability standpoint there. But enforcement of any rule, policy, code, to a large extent, is discretionary. It's not, I guess it's not so black and white, in the sense that if you fail to terminate an employee, that there would be some sort of potential ramification for that. I'm understanding your question.
So, so let me take it just one step further then. I think maybe I was a little nebulous in that. So within the village of Swamaco, our staff, what if we had staff harassing another staff member? And we chose to ignore that, not take notice of that?
So that staff member who was being harassed may, as a result, have a claim against you for not taking direct action. And harassment is a unique category, unlike probably many other parts of your code, your employee handbook. But that could be the potential, you know, for additional harm against that staff member, which would result in, in liability for the village at that point.
Okay. So my understanding then is, we looked at chapter two in the general government, and we look at the code of ethics, and this is just to frame this before the rest of you carry on with your discussion. You know, the code of ethics, as I read it here, is a code of ethics that is intended as guidance to guide not only village staff, but guide this board in terms of how we manage our facing to the public and our facing to each other and our dealings with each other. Some of you on this board will recall, some years ago, we did have a staff member, and there was an occurrence publicly, you know, with that particular staff member making some comments that were viewed by some board members as inappropriate. And there was a discussion with that person, and that moved forward. My question to you, to the board, and to all of us addressing this today, is simply this, really. When we look at our ethics that we have here, regardless of liability, which there could be or couldn't be, do we, do we believe that we on this board should be held to a different standard than the staff? Or do we believe that we on this board, as elected officials, should be held to the same, to the same standard as staff? And that standard is outlined in the ethics. So if your answer to that is, no, we shouldn't be held to the same standard because we're not employees or we're elected officials, welcome to tyranny. Welcome to creating kings. Welcome to the end of, the beginning of the end of democracy at the local level. If your belief is that, yes, we should be held to the same standard because our expectations for everybody who works on staff, we need to hold ourselves to the same, if not a higher expectation, as leaders. If that's your belief, then the reason, then what we have to be here today, why we're here today, is how do we go forward to address this going forward? I believe, trustee Netto, that, that you, you can be a valuable asset. You're an elected official in the village of Swamaco. You bring a perspective to the village of Swamaco. I think that it's important somehow to, to manage the value that you bring to Swamaco with the personal views that you bring to Swamaco, and those are completely your own. So, anyway, finishing up and then letting somebody else go. So that is really the question I see before us right now, today. Do we hold ourselves to the same standard or higher? Yes or no? And if we do, how do we address this?
We do have to hold ourselves to a higher standard because we are, we are leadership. Show me in any organization where a leader is held to the same standards and not higher standards, because they are a leader within that organization. No different than here. We are leaders of, duly elected leaders of the village of Swamaco. In that, it requires a responsibility. The responsibility is to act in accordance, not in accordance, but above reproach in the form of interaction, ethical behavior, and whatnot. So when you say, should we be held to the same standard? No, we need to be held to a much higher standard, just like any other organization, a leader in any organization. And I teach, I teach people about organizations. And every single one, if you are gonna be a leader, you are going to be put on a pedestal, but you are also gonna be looked at much more critically because of that.
Duly elected representatives.
That's what I said, didn't.
Not leaders. We're representatives.
I will agree and disagree, because who makes the decisions for the village on how to spend money, how, in which direction, what are we to do?
On behalf of the people that elected us.
Exactly. We are duly elected representatives, but we are in a leadership position.
So, if I may, my thing on the code of ethics...
Were you done, trustee Eckert? Did you have something else?
It's fine. The code of ethics, for sure. We absolutely had to follow that. That's, that's part of the ordinance. What I'm wondering about is, when we reference employee manual, and I know you said that we're employees. No, you didn't say that.
No, I did not say that.
Okay.
I said that the policies within the employee handbook, some of those policies still apply to you as an elected official.
Okay, so that's an important distinction, I feel. Because when I look at the statutes, I see, for instance, 61.327, which states that when a trustee also serves as a village employee, when I see a statute like that, my presumption then is that by default, a trustee is not a village employee. It's only when they serve as a different duty.
Correct.
Okay. And the second thing, with any kind of employee manual, in all of my time, in all my jobs I've ever worked at, when I would get an employee manual, I had to sign it, so that I received this employee manual. Right? So my distinction isn't about whether or not we should be held to a certain level of conduct. I believe that the voters will have to do that. But I also want to make sure that there, in my mind, anyway, that there is a distinction between whether we're held by the statutes of Wisconsin, the constitution, our own code of ethics, versus an employee manual. So if I see something in an employee manual, from what I'm gathering, is that kind of, we're kind of held responsible for certain sections of that?
Correct. I mean, they're not gonna offer you full-time health insurance or pay you a wage that's gonna allow you to support your family as an elected official. You're not getting vacation time like your staff members. But the self-imposed policies that you, as a board, have reviewed, or former boards have reviewed and said, yes, this is, this is the conduct that we believe is appropriate for this organization, those policies apply to you.
Okay, so because the employee manual has in here that it applies to the elected officials, that's where you're saying that at some point in time, the board has approved this policy and said that these policies apply to us?
Mm-hmm. Correct. But if I was unclear on that before, I apologize. Definitely not an employee of the village.
It's kind of, you know, I just want to make sure I'm clear on, you know, what the governance is, because to your, to everyone, to the point that, welcome to tyranny, anytime a legislative body gives over power and authority to an executive body, it's never a good sign. So I just wanted to be clear on that. I rest.
I guess I, I gotta bring us back to kind of the basics of the conversations, is, we can spend a lot of time talking about what's in policies and procedures, and I'm sure there's a way to make everyone comfortable, but I think we just have to bring ourselves back to a situation that none of us were there. But the words that were exchanged had a very different meaning. And my question is, is to trustee Nettle, is, is that if you had to do over in that conversation and knowing what you're learning today, would you address the situation differently? And so when somebody, right or wrong, and we've all had conversations probably that felt a little out of context, but when you make a threat to somebody, whether it was meant or not, to, to remove a public building through arson, that is a dangerous place to be. And so my question to the board here is, is that we are at a higher standard in the words that come out of our mouth. And so I wasn't there. And I, and I don't want to pretend I was there, but what I heard was, is that that exchange happened. And so I, I'm of the opinion, we can do the policies and procedures, but I think we just have to bring ourselves back to the situation, regardless of how tense it might have been. It might have been probably more appropriate to rise above that. And whether you want to believe that or not, I wasn't there, but I would like your perspective of why those words were chosen. And, and so, I mean, that's my, my position on this.
You just get used to saying stuff.
I understand.
And when you're used to saying stuff, and you're caught up in the heat of the moment, it just comes out.
Yep.
And it's...
It's unfortunate.
It's an interpretation.
Yep.
I mean, I've given away almost $100,000 to local charities since January 1st. Do you really think that I meant I was gonna go burn down a building?
I don't, okay? But it's not what I think, it's what others think. Right? And so that's the challenge we have sitting up here, is what is the perception of this group of people in the public? And so I guess that's what we have to address, is, in the heat of the moment, the words that we choose, could we choose different words? And that's really what I'm asking. It's the creation of duress is the issue. So there's duress created. So a situation is created, whether you meant it or not, whatever you meant, the rest of, when the rest of the community hears this, they don't know what you meant. They don't know trustee Netto, Brian Netto, they don't know, maybe they don't know you from your bar. But what they hear is, I'm gonna burn the place down. There's only one way to interpret that, and you can mince it any way you want. But when you're talking about a building, we're gonna burn the building out. That's how it's interpreted, and that's how most people hear it. And you as much have said that, yes, that's what you said. What it does is, it creates duress with the individual who you're having that conversation. And more importantly, to some degree, it creates duress with, with village members who are concerned about that. Look at, we have, you know, we have a trustee who's talking about burning down a building, because that's all they see, they got blinders on, right? They don't know Brian Netto from anybody else. So, you know, there's an issue there, and, you know, when we talk about these issues, we've had other discussions about issues, which was a meeting, you know, you chose not to be here for, but I know you had a conversation with trustee Schneider on it, and those were conversations with individual staff members, you know, when you initially started. And since then, there haven't been more issues like that. So I think it was, you know, that could be considered a learning experience, and, you know, you've taken that step forward, you know, learned from that. It doesn't matter who was there. It doesn't matter, it took place, we know it took place, you've said it took place, and we have to respond to it as a village. So as, as a village, we're, again, I, I'm just gonna take it back to what I said earlier. We're faced with a choice. Is this something that we acknowledge and say, okay, you know, you're bad, be a good boy next time? You know? Or is this something that we have to put something stronger on so that the village position is, and there's a marker in time that says, no, this is not permissible behavior for a trustee, regardless of who that individual is on, on the board? And I'm not advocating, well, we'll leave it at that.
Well, I, I think the process that we're following here, where we're sharing our feelings about the actual use of the language, and I, I agree that that language was, probably should not have been used. But it's still language, it's still speech. And when it boils down to it, if there was no real belief that there's a threat, then I think if we do anything beyond that, I think that needs to go through a whole court process. Because right now, the way I look at it, he's exercised his right of free speech, because there was no real threat there. And the attorney might be able to help me with this. What are the criteria for a threat to be considered real? Like, if I say something, what is the criteria for that to actually be a threat?
I don't, I don't know how to answer that question. I mean, if, if you're talking about it in the criminal context, I believe that there has to be, it's about the person who the threat is directed at and their belief at that time as to whether... at, and their belief at that time as to whether they could actually be harmed. It's been a long time since I've looked at that statute, and I did look at it for a totally unrelated, obviously, issue.
Sure.
But I think it has more to do with the state of mind of the person who receives, receives the threat.
Because is the threat real? Like, for instance, you might say, boy, I'm going to.
But again, that's from a criminal context. I'm not, I'm not talking about it from a civil context.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we're talking.
And is there a difference? Because here's my concern. My concern is, is that there is, you have the First Amendment right to speech. We all have that. So if we're going to enact a penalty of some sort as a board on someone's chosen speech, we better be really sure that we are in a good place there, because there's also consequences for that behavior, is there not? If I apply a consequence to somebody for their speech, isn't there then a possibility of a civil rights lawsuit?
I, I don't.
Would be a violation of the First Amendment, but this is not a violation of the First Amendment.
What we're doing now isn't, by speaking.
You, you, you've conflated this to some degree, I believe.
Okay, that's fine.
So, so to some degree, you've conflated this with a criminal proceeding. There is no criminal proceeding, otherwise we wouldn't be here, and this would be in the sheriff's office to be, to be mitigated. We're not there. There is no First Amendment violation being discussed here. What's being discussed goes back to the ethics. Was there a violation of the ethics policy that we have in place? So the choice is this. Do we follow the ethics policy that we have in place, or depending on what we decide tonight, do we take this ethics, this ethics and say, nope, this is no longer any good, we want this thrown out, we want this rewritten, we want something changed in here? So do we, as a village board, follow our own ethics, or do we not? It's that simple.
Okay. And that's fine. So the, the point would be then, is that we would be saying that if a person uses speech that we consider abrasive, offensive, potentially threatening, that that person shall be subject then to our ethics?
Nope, it's not, nope. I disagree with that. It is not if we find it offensive, it's not if we find it problematic, it, it's not even if the individual who was the recipient of the language finds it problematic. He might not, or she. The violation is, does it violate the ethics policy that we have in place? Because then your choice is either follow the ethics policy, or throw the ethics policy out, and that's what I'm asking.
Okay, in this situation, with this specific situation, which section of the ethics policy was violated?
There's a couple of them actually, I mean, there's a couple that are highlighted here. So, the issue of improper conduct.
That's the Employee Manual.
This is, this is, Chapter Two, Code of Ethics, Village of Swamaco Code of Ethics. A village official, board or committee member or employee should not use his or her position to obtain, well, this is obtain potential financial gain or any other substantial value for his or her own personal benefit. That is item dedicated A. Improper contact is, improper conduct is defined under definitions for, for more information there.
Any violation of this section, right? So if I violate this section, I'm guilty of, allegedly guilty of improper conduct. I get that.
Violation of the ethics.
Yeah.
Violation of the Village of Swamaco Code of Ethics.
And that particular item there too is a position that trustee Neto should refrain from voting on, like when there was the liquor license for your establishment, you chose to vote on it, and you really should not be voting on that.
Was that the consent agenda? Was that under the consent agenda?
I don't remember.
Is that what we were talking about?
The liquor license was, no, that was a separate item, wasn't it?
Those are separate, yeah.
Okay. But it was with a group of, like, just to be clear, was it when we voted on that big group of licenses and approved them all? Or was it like a specific one that dealt with his bar?
No, there was, there was multiple.
There was multiple, but if you're in there, I mean, you, you gotta.
I get your point.
You gotta refrain from that.
I get your point. I know that though, in every other time, when it dealt with his bar directly, he did recuse himself. So in a group vote like that, I sort of feel like, yeah, you might be right, but at the same time, it's a large, we're voting on a pile of stuff there, and it was, I'm sure, unanimous vote.
You can, you can also ask to have that pulled out individually.
You could, yeah, yeah.
And that's, that's a, that's a sticky nuance that only comes with experience from the board or somebody advising.
Yeah, I feel like that one.
It could be, could be construed as so.
Yeah.
Who else?
We could go back and forth all night. I mean, what do you plan to do? I mean, you guys don't like what I say a lot, too. Again, I could be, I could be on this, I could be the subject of this next week, because you don't like what I say. Obviously a concern. Are we the judge and jury here? I mean, are we, what, we're, we could talk about this all night long, but what, what do you actually want to do here?
I, I don't, you know, that's really for us as the board to decide. So there are, there are remedies for this. I don't know that, you know, the issue rises to, you know, the, the extreme level of some of the remedies involved, you know, but because this issue has come forward, and because this issue is public, and an issue that has been going around for some time, you know, again, do we support? I think we need some sort of statement as a board, that either we support our Code of Ethics as written, or, or we don't, and we're rewriting them. I think that that's, first of all, there's, is there agreement on the board that we support the current Code of Ethics? Or is there agreement on the board that we need to take the Code of Ethics and put it back for revision?
I support the Code of Ethics as written.
Okay.
I support the Code of Ethics as written.
Okay.
Agreed.
Everyone else?
Yeah, I support it.
Trustee Neto?
Yeah.
Okay. So we, we have consensus that we support the Code of Ethics. So now the message that we, and again, I'll throw this out there as an opinion, and you guys decide, we're, we're bored, we each have one vote. Do, what is the message that we need to send to the Village of Swamaco, to those who see this, who read this, who are partaking of this, to those in the audience? What's the message that we need to send to reassure them that we support the Code of Ethics going forward?
Well, in the memorandum, it, it's talked about the village code and the issue of censure. But there is nothing in the handbook, the Code of Ethics, or anything that addresses censure set. And according to the, the letter, a censure is a public proclamation that an individual's conduct is outside the group's acceptable standards, which we all just reaffirmed. There are no legal consequences for such a reprimand, it's ultimately a symbolic process. I don't know how we would go about something like that, other than to do a censure, because it does exactly what I think we were just talking about. It's a, it's a process that we say, this was done, we don't agree with it, we've had a discussion about it, steps are being taken to ensure that it doesn't happen again.
And I'm, I'm good with that, but what do we do going forward if something else happens? Are we just going to say, oh, we don't agree with that, but, you know, so on, and nothing's done again? As legal, how many times do you say, can't do that? But other people in workforces get in all kinds of trouble for looking the other way?
Sure. I mean, I, I, I don't know that I would agree that that's 100% a legal question. How many times do we, you know, as you said, give them a slap on the wrist, or whatever it might be? The, the two questions that you have, and I think you've identified this clearly, has there been a violation? And if we believe that the answer to that is yes, is there some action that we want to take? Your action that you can take with regard to an elected official is limited, and so, you know, this idea of a censure, I, personally, I don't think it's that different from incorporating into your minutes the discussion that you're having tonight. I mean, I'm happy to draft something up if you, as a board, want to consider that. But it seems to me as though a record, a clear record has been made of the fact that there was some conduct that we believe to some extent does violate the Code of Ethics, and we as a board are not in agreement with that.
So a motion?
You could, you could do that by motion, we could do it by resolution. There are no strict parameters to this, because, again, it is more of a symbolic, it, it's not, it's not, there's no legal repercussion for it. What you are doing is you're signifying to the voters, we disagree with this conduct. And if that is ultimate, ultimately likely to have some sort of impact on any elected official's seat, that should be felt at the ballot box.
Agreed.
So, what I just heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, so what I just heard is, I could make a motion that I don't, I don't think the conduct was appropriate? And then, and we move on?
A motion would have to be.
You could make a motion that, you know, the board believes there's been a violation of the Code of Ethics by, you know, the, whatever occurred on whichever date, and that would be incorporated into your minutes.
So the motion would be, on such and such a date, or whenever the, there was, the board is in agreement that there was a violation of our Code of Ethics by trustee Neto? That, that's the motion. There's a motion that there was a violation of the Code of Ethics by trustee Neto on, and such and such date. And then there's, there's a second to the motion, and then there's a vote, yes, then the board's in agreement. Would that do it?
Wouldn't we have to specify which?
I wanted to add one more thing, just real quick, though. So going longer term and trying to clear our things up, what, one thing I don't see in this general comment, sorry, general government and Code of Ethics, is I think we need a piece in here, a process that talks about censure, so that if we do face this again, after additional aspects, this, violations of the Code of Ethics for elected officials, officials could result in censure after a public hearing, something to that effect.
Sure. And I, I don't, I don't think that that would be something to have too much discussion and a vote on tonight, because that's not actually what's on the agenda.
Right, right, right. Agreed.
But directing staff to come back.
I'm directing, I, I'm offering that based on consensus from the board, that this would be something to refer back to staff if that's appropriate, maybe that's a separate motion.
Yeah, it's a separate.
It's a separate motion. All right, so the first.
I can, I can make that.
Trustee, trustee Rome is.
I just wanted to just.
Okay.
I want to air something out here. When it, when it comes down to it, why are we here? We're having this conversation because a citizen was, was angry because there were kids in her yard, and then when she called somebody, the person responded in a way that she felt was inappropriate. So then she called a group of trustees, and a trustee responded and called the person who she had talked to. Is that a fair assessment of why we're here, talking about this? And his response was such, in such a way that it was considered offensive?
I would, I wouldn't agree with that.
Okay, how would you rephrase it?
I wouldn't necessarily rephrase it. I think the reason we're here is because there was a conversation that was, that is deemed inappropriate, or is being viewed as inappropriate, between a trustee and another individual in the village. And it's not just the individual who brought that forward, but there have been multiple people who, I think a number of us have been contacted by within the village, who have brought this up and said, what's going on with the trustee wanting to burn down public property? And again, that's their blinders on.
Yeah. I guess I, what I'm trying to say is, that's why we, we reached this point, is because of this, these steps. And at the meeting when this was brought up, I thought you handled it very well by stating that, you know what, this is unacceptable language, unacceptable behavior, and I thought we were pretty much done with it. We're back, and it's good. I think this is a healthy conversation, because there's a lot of items in here that we need to talk about. The whole concept of a censure, you know, my position on speech, I very strongly believe a person has a right to say the things that they want to say, even if it's considered offensive. I know that doesn't rub a lot of people the right way, but that's how I feel. I just feel like we take, we take this stuff sometimes too far. And I think what we've done today is we've used our speech as a board to make it clear to everyone on the board of acceptable behavior. I think taking it to another step of a censure or a motion, I think that's just getting, getting, it's going too far. That, and that's all I, that's what I've got to say.
Well, if you don't want to be part of the motion, then you don't agree.
I know.
You don't agree with it.
Yep. I just wanted to give my opinion on that.
Was, can I ask?
How we got here and now what we're going to do.
Can I ask, was there a complaint filed?
An ethics complaint? I don't know.
About the issue we're speaking of?
I don't know that there was, I don't know that there was a complaint filed.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe administrator could answer that.
I wouldn't say there was a formal complaint, though he did speak to the discussion at a board meeting. And there was a letter, at least one letter received, I think, at least one letter received from a concerned citizen who was there.
But there's a process, though.
There's a process.
Yeah, there's a section 209 that is actually, and that says that there needs to be.
A formal complaint to the Ethics Committee, and then the, the $200.
Okay.
All right, if there's nobody else, trustee Andrews has been trying to get something out.
Then I will make a motion that trustee Neto was in violation of the Code of Ethics regarding threatening remarks on, was it June 17th, at that meeting?
Oh, I'm not.
Close enough.
For the date.
That's, that's what's in my packet. Was that the June 17th?
I have June 17th, yes.
That was the meeting date, the village board meeting date.
Well.
Prior to June 17th.
Prior to June 17th. June 17th is when we heard it. You know, that the individual did respond that those remarks were made. So prior to June 17th, I don't know what date you want, you want to use, because I don't know what that exact date was.
I think that's probably fine, that's enough.
Okay. It's on record at least, June 17th, from the village board minutes. So that's my motion. The trustee Neto was in violation of Code of Ethics regarding threatening remarks from June 17th.
So the motion is the board is in agreement, is that what we're saying, the board is in agreement?
Yeah. If, if everyone's in agree.
Well, that you vote in it.
You can vote, you can vote against it.
If you want to vote.
Okay. So I guess it isn't that the board's in agreement, it is, the, the motion is trustee Neto was in violation of the ethics, the ethics criteria, the ethics code, the Swamaco Ethics Code, based on comments made prior to June 17th regarding lighting the barn on fire.
What, 2.09, friends, what friends, what? Which section did he violate?
It's not your, your purview to amend his motion.
I'm, I just wanted clarification.
And I, I wanted to state too, I'm uncomfortable with this, because I wasn't part of that conversation.
Right. Okay. So we, we do have a motion, again, it goes back to, I think, item 4E, improper conduct under that area, but there is a motion on the floor, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So we have a second from trustee Schneider on trustee Andrews' motion. Any other further?
Question, Paul?
Of course.
And discussion. What you were going to do, I know, before you said roll call.
Further, further comments or questions?
So improper conduct is, is a definition that just refers to any violations of this section, although I agree that the language was not appropriate. I do not know what section of the Code of Ethics was actually violated. And at this point, no one is, can, no one is, can point out to me what section was actually violated. So how can we hold somebody accountable for violating a section of the Code of Ethics when we can't even say which section it was?
Workplace violence.
We're, no, that's the Employee Manual.
Well, the Employee Manual is still part of the whole Code of Ethics.
Is that right?
It governs our Code of Ethics. That's under.
Is the other way around?
Under E, page 29. Page 29, under E, ethics. It's, it's all under that. It's all part of the code of ethics.
So the code of ethics is 2.09. It's, it's in our ordinance. Is that right?
Then on page 33, there's the letter E. Employees shall not make threats or engage in violent or potentially violent behavior, including to, three, parentheses, three, making threatening remarks. I don't know how much more I need to spell it out.
Well, the, the issue is that you're referring to the employee manual, but you haven't given me a tie-in to the motion. The motion says violated the code of ethics, which is our ordinance, section 2.09.
You would have to amend it to, what I believe trustee Romez is saying is you would have to amend it to saying violations of the employee conduct, rather than the ethics-
Right.
-violation.
That's correct.
Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then we're right back to where we started from.
Sure are.
Is, is, are we, are we employees or not? I mean, that's what we started this conversation with. So you can't hold somebody accountable for something that, that's in the employee manual if we're not held to that standard.
I just gotta ask this question. Is there anybody in this room who, for the love of Mike-
Yes.
Can, can, not you personally, or you. Is there anybody, is there anybody? We can get into the nitty gritty of this all day long. Is there anybody who feels like the comment, I'm gonna burn your barn down, is acceptable? How is that acceptable? You, you know what? If it's a one-on-one conversation, and I'm sitting across from you, you know, at a bar, and we're having that conversation, and I say, I'm gonna burn your barn down, that's one thing. Then, then those are just fighting words, right? And maybe we go outside, maybe we don't. But on the other hand, if I'm an elected official, and I tell you, unless you do something, I'm just gonna burn your barn down, or I'm gonna burn your barn down, now you're using leverage, you're creating duress, you're creating issues with your position. We can nitpick this all you want, but wrong boy is wrong, period.
So I would like to just move forward with this also. So what words do you, what words should I be using, legal counsel?
We've got a motion on the floor. You have a choice to amend it or not amend it.
Well, I, you know, you're, I guess you're asking me to pinpoint for you sections of either the, the code of ethics or the employee handbook that I think would be most appropriate for you to use in your motion. I think that there's general language in the code of ethics that speaks to morality that probably could apply here. But I can't tell you if I think that this is an appropriate situation for you to reference that part of your code.
How about this, a violation, violation of the employee conduct in conjunction with the village's code of ethics, that way you cover everything.
You have a motion, you have a motion that you've made on the floor that the board, and it has been seconded, correct?
Yes, I ha, I-
And it has been seconded. There is a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded. It is your choice to amend or not to amend that motion if you choose, or to put it up for a vote as it was made and seconded.
Anyone can make an amendment. Anyone can make the motion to amend.
Is there anyone who wishes to make that motion to amend?
I will make that motion to amend. To, to be stated, employee conduct in conjunction with the village's code of ethics.
All right.
That has to be voted on first before his.
Okay. So let's have a vote. Let's do a roll call vote on the amended. Claire, could you read that back to us, please?
All right, so the amendment is made by trustee Schneider that it would be that trustee Neto violated the employee conduct in conjunction with the village's code of ethics.
Correct. That is on the floor for a vote.
The amendment. I don't have a second to the amendment.
I would give you that second on that amendment.
Okay.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
I will recuse.
Very good.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Nay.
Trustee Neto's recuse. Trustee Romez.
Nay.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
So I've got four ayes, two nays, and a recuse.
Understood. Okay, so the second motion, then.
Technically the first.
Sorry, yes, technically the first. So the, your first motion, trustee Andrews. So that first motion has already had, the motion has been made, and that motion has been seconded. Could you read us back what that motion was?
Motion was made by trustee Andrews and seconded by trustee Schneider to that, sorry. Motion was made by trustee Andrews and seconded by trustee Schneider that trustee Neto violated the employee conduct in conjunction with the village's code of ethics regarding threatening remarks made prior to June 17th, 2024.
As it pertains to the historical society barn, please add that. Or is that another amendment? Because I'm not voting again on this. I just think for detail. Could we have a roll call on that as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Recused.
Trustee Eckert.
Nay.
Trustee Romez.
Nay.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries four, two, one.
Good, thank you. Just one last note on this. So back to the village administrator, back to staff, was the idea of coming up with a censured portion of this for future discussion? Thank you.
Well, we, we go through all village ordinances and policies and procedures. This would be no different, wouldn't it?
I agree. I think it'd be healthy for us to go through this process.
I think so, too. All right, let's, let's leave this fascinating topic and move on to the next fascinating topic, which is item 7B, the wetland mitigation bank. Administrator Kaker. Thank you, Attorney Lahaki, for your attendance. I promised not to interrupt you this time.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite up Craig Shu. And Chad Fardett, up to the front. If you've been following along for the last five or so years with this wetland mitigation bank project, you know we've been talking a lot about a potential for a stream bank restoration portion of the project. That's the main topic of discussion tonight, though we can get into the site visit we had with the Army Corps of Engineers earlier this month, or I guess it'd be last month, and just give a general overview update on the wetland bank. I will let Chad lead it off, and I know we do have a couple of newer trustees on the board, maybe if you want to just give a 30-second elevator pitch as to what the wetland mitigation bank is, that might be helpful.
Okay, nine years and 30 seconds.
Nine, 28.
We, we took marginal farmland that had previously been drained, that was owned by the village and private properties, and we have, we're in the process of converting it back to wetland so that we generate wetland credits to sell to businesses, farms, and most recently, I think your largest sale was for the Lyonville expansion, where they're filling wetlands. They need to offset the impacts, or what people like to call trade wetlands. You can trade wetlands by, by contacting Alex and bringing a boatload of cash over to the village, and you can trade your wetlands here at a swamp again. So that's essentially the premise of it. The stream mitigation corridor, we were trying to capture stream mitigation credits, which is another subset of mitigation impacts. But two reasons we're not doing that. One, the stream is marginal, and we're not sure that will generate enough credits after the core stream team met with us. And secondly, the core is not currently requiring mitigation on low-quality streams, which are the bulk of streams in, in this area, in the northwest Lake Michigan basin. So it doesn't really prove to be essential. But there are certainly a lot of wetlands to be filled. So what we can do with our stream corridor is one of two things. You're either required to vegetate it, and we may garner a small amount of credit, or we can go back and turn that back into wetlands, rather than a stream mitigation. And we can generate approximately four credits, the value of which would be about 582,000, with a cost of about 158 to produce those credits. So you'll have a net, net benefit on that. We are also required to move into our next phase of construction. We're evaluating hydrology at the moment, and when we reach our hydrology interim goals, we can request more credits, because you're currently out of credits. And then next spring, we'll start planting trees as soon as we're assured that we have hydrology across certain areas of the site, of which we do during our site visit. With the core and DNR, we do have surface water in some areas. So we talked about how we can rehabilitate those to other credit types. Currently, your bank's mostly forested. So we're working through those issues, and Alex has shared the costs with you on the different segments. Maybe answer questions. And Craig is our engineer, and I have to say that the project would not have gotten along very well without Craig and, and all the village staff, especially Andy and Alex, working this through with us.
So, thank you, Chad. I guess I can just add a little bit more to this. So Ayers was brought into the fold approximately a year and a half ago, October of 2022. Chad and his team along with the village.
You gave me your chair, didn't you? Nope.
Did a lot of the legwork to get the regulatory agencies to the location that they were. And they needed assistance when getting a plan put together for construction. In essence, what they were doing was putting underground dams and regrading that site back to previous conditions to work with the hydrology that is subsurface. So last summer, we bid the project out. Last fall, a contractor came in, did a lot of the work that we were proposing. And now it's, we're really into an evaluation phase of how, how those improvements to that, to make it back to a wetland work. And that's where Chad comes back into play with his monitoring of the monitor wells, the hydraulics underground. So it's not surface water, it's subsurface, roughly a foot down typically. And that's what allows you to get that wetland vegetation to grow and thrive. So Alex had mentioned, we did a site tour a few weeks ago, I think that was about three weeks ago now, with the DNR, Army Corps of Engineers, myself, Chad, and we dragged Alex along as well, in his boots, for a day. It was interesting to see what has germinated, what is starting to come back with what we did last fall. There was a few items where, you know, it's, it's a bit of a trial and error, because we can model it till we're blue in the face on the computer, and it's still a little bit of massaging what happens with mother nature. And when you have a really wet spring, like we had this year, we had lots of hydraulic activity out there. So now we're in that phase of the summer where it's calmed down a little bit. It's probably raining out there right now, unfortunately, to see where that natural balance is gonna be. But this next phase, as Alex has in his memo, opens up additional credits to the village for a minor stream realignment and some additional work along that corridor, which was left off of that project that we bid last year, because we were still working on some approvals and working through the authorization from the Army Corps and the DNR. And that site visit that we had a few weeks ago reaffirmed that there is possibilities out there for some more improvements.
So there is no requirement that we pursue this stream corridor project. It's really if the village board is willing to accept the risk of putting in these expenses and then not recovering the credit sales, which, to be frank, I mean, we're relying on Chad to tell us, is there a market for these types of credits? And if there is, well, it doesn't take much business sense to say, yeah, that makes, that makes some sense. So as long as Chad is saying that there is a market, I think it does make sense to pursue that stream corridor. But that's up to the village board if they would like to take on that additional risk.
So currently, your bank is all forested credits, which is the highest credit type. So you can mitigate other credit types with those forested credits. However, when other banks come online, which there will be, and there actually already is one in Sheboygan County that can compete with you, they have other credit types, which you don't, and lower credit types. So if we were to do this project, we would propose that this, we would be wet and sedge metal product. The, we would look to be sedge metal, however, the DNR and core are combining credit types, so I would just say it's a wet sedge metal. They'll be combining those two. And there is a market for that, that is the most purchased credit type, because a lot of low-grade wet meadows, reed canary grass, fragmites, wetlands are mitigated, and that's the credit type that's purchased for those. Or agricultural land is typically usually mitigated by wet metal. So that's the credit type that we would choose. You would end up with approximately four credits of wet metal, and those would sell, certainly. Now, you're, just to tell you about where you're selling credits, you're selling credits in, in Brown County, in the Duck-Pensake watershed, Vilja-Swamako, Canto County, Marinette, Door, Kiwanee, Sheboygan, and Manitowoc counties. There is a bank in Sheboygan County that caters to Sheboygan counties that currently you're not likely to get credits out of there until they're out of credits, but you're currently out of credits until we get another credit release.
How soon would we get these credits? For the stream?
Upon agreement, you would get 10%, so you get 0.4 credits. The biggest credit release we're looking to get is on hydrology, and after we plant trees in the spring. If we do meet our first interim hydrology benchmark, then you'll get another credit release. So that's really where we're gonna generate. Most of your credits are the, the hydrology. These, these credits will come over time along with the rest of, over the next nine years.
Okay, that was gonna be my question. Does this slow anything down, or they just come concurrent with each other?
It's all concurrent. This is, and they've authorized this for a minor amendment to your bank instrument, so we don't have to go through years of, of red tape anymore. They're just gonna take it, accept it, and enter it into the, the MBI. It's a minor change.
And there is a, a safety valve in this. So the potential motion tonight that I have listed for you really just authorizes the contract with Ayers to design and bid this project. If construction costs, once we get the bids back, are at 500,000, well, we can say, no thanks. But we anticipate the actual construction costs to be much lower. But if we do move forward, the board will see this again, once we get the bids back, hopefully this early fall. Because we'd like to get the construction done, if we're gonna do it, and later this season.
What portion of the design bidding construction inspection cost of 39,000 would we be essentially approving then? Not the full amount, right?
No, because some of that is with the construction and inspection costs, but Craig would have to help us out.
So Mike, thank you. That was a good question. So in our proposal, we do have it broken down into three phases. So the design phase, the bidding phase, and then construction if we move forward. So if you're looking at reducing that cost at this point in time, the construction phase can be removed as desired, if you wanted to move forward with design and bidding, and then make a decision if and when the costs come in acceptable to move forward with construction, to make sure that we have the as-bills required for the DNR. And that's really what we need to do. We need to do documentation so that they release those credits for you. And we take pictures, we'll take some as-bills. So, you know, the, the site visits are what we, you know, they wanted to see.
Right, yeah, but that's after the construction.
Yep, correct.
Or during construction.
And our contract is a, is a, not, it's not lump sum. We're working on an hourly basis. So if we are, if we can do the design and bidding more efficiently, or even the construction, if we don't need to go out there as much, we don't use that. So this is our best estimate based off of what transpired last summer and fall through the bidding process that, for that construction that was last year for the hydrology. the bidding process for that construction that was last year for the hydrology.
Thank you.
So would there be any maintenance costs with this down the road that we have to take care of?
For the first few years, they'll be mowing, the same as the rest of the bank. It'll get mowed at 10 inches for the first probably three years. And then after that, hopefully it would be, natives would be growing enough that we could reduce maintenance. And there will likely be some invasive species control cost, herbicide, hand pulling, such as the same as the rest of the bank. And it could be ongoing for two years.
Be some minimal maintenance expense?
Yep.
Okay.
The, with the selling of these credits, seeing 582,000 dollars as potential, what's the period of time? Are we talking about one year, five years, 10 years? Because what I'm really trying to do is what's the ROI on this?
That'll be over, likely over a 10-year period. The rest of the bank is, if you add that into the mix, is about 7.2 million. And you've already sold 500, and if I'm wrong, you're 539,000 in credits. I think you sold some at a discount, which was a good move that was made. So we expect the rest of the credits to go at 145, but occasionally projects come up that in an overlapping section, such as the Lineville project. And it wouldn't make any sense to let that project go without mitigating that. So those are sold, a little bit reduced cost. But we expect credit prices just keep rising. When we started this project, we were about 60,000, 63,000, yeah. And now we're at 145.5, and that's expected to continue to rise because land costs go up, seed costs, everything goes with inflation. We've seen even, we've seen everything rise because of inflation. But you'll still see a fairly decent ROI over time, but it is 10 years to get that.
Isn't there a risk, though? I mean, there was some time, isn't there a risk in terms of governance, state governance, changing how these credits are utilized, or if they're needed at all?
Well, you're still under a federal process as well. So we have dual regulation in Wisconsin, regulated by both the US Army Corps, EPA, and DNR, so I guess we have actually three.
Yeah.
I don't see that going away ever. And I don't see Wisconsin's regulatory environment changing much. There could be some change in how we use exemptions, what's called a non-federal exemption, and that's where more credit sales are coming from right now. That could change in Wisconsin. However, that could, that will go back to permit situations and you'd be back to mitigation anyway, so it's just an easier process. So I still see mitigation continuing to go forward in the state. We're under a lot of development pressures in the urban areas, and you do have urban areas in your bank service area. There are parts of the state in other bank service areas where we recommend no banks be constructed and people only use the DNR program because there are just not any urban areas in those regions. But you do have population centers here. So I expect with development pressure over years that you will sell all your credits eventually.
And these credits, as we earn these credits, they're usable by the Village of Swamaco.
You can also use those for your projects as well. So if you have a road project and need to fill wetlands, you just deb it from your bank.
And you guys know me, again, a question of how big the scope government should be. I don't think we need it.
What do we have into this right now?
Just over a million.
And we've gotten 539 back?
Mm-hmm.
What do we have committed to it right now? Is it close to two?
Well, we, probably closer to two because we still have additional construction costs. And then we have a requirement to monitor the, maintain and monitor the project for at least 10 years. And I think that's about 25,000 a year at least. And there's a letter of credit that we've given off to the DNR so that if we walk away from it, they can pull that letter of credit and get the money anyway, and we don't get to sell the credits.
So it looks to me like we're looking at maybe making this around a 2.2 million-dollar project. But we have...
From just construction standpoint, yes.
Oh, elaborate.
Well, you'll still have the engineering costs and the monitoring and maintenance of it.
It's probably close to three.
Okay. And then we, it seems to me like, speaking of ROIs, that we should actually hit our break even pretty quickly with those credits. Was it 58 credits plus another six or something?
Well, it always depends, it's always going to depend on how quickly the credits are released.
If you call quickly 10 years.
There's certain hydrology requirements that have to be met before the DNR and Army Corps will...
That's what we have you guys for.
Allow a release for. And that is why we have them.
Yep.
Yeah, we're stuck with our schedule of releases. So when you initially agree to the project, such as this little addition, you get 10%. So you'll get your 0.4. But you really get a lot out of the hydrology when we meet hydrology criteria, which we can already say two-thirds of the site has already met hydrology criteria. We're still analyzing the other third. The core was confident we've met hydrology all over, however, we still need to show that with data. So we're working on that. That'll get you another release. And then we watch the hydrology over its years. We plant the trees. You get another release when we finish planting all the trees. So we just need to meet those interim goals, and as soon as we meet them, they're released. If you had all your credits now, we would be selling more of them. You probably would be at 10 credit sales right now instead of five, or 5.8, whatever you're at, 5.8. Yeah, it's just about how fast we can get them released. And it takes time, especially with forested sites, they take longer. But they're the ones where you can sell to anybody for any type of credit. They are the best ones to have at the end of the day. This new section being wet metal, you'll sell those. I have no doubt you'll sell those credits. It's just how long you're willing to wait. So it's an 8.2, like 8.7 million-dollar project, and he'll probably have it somewhere between 2.2 and 3 million-dollar cost.
And that money that comes in over our costs, does that go into what fund?
General fund.
General fund. So instead of taxes?
You can spend it pretty much however you want, debt service.
Okay. So that would offset a tax, taxes, that's what the benefit is to the public.
And remember that you do have an agreement with the adjacent property owner. So 37.6% of any profit is going to that property owner.
As well as expenses, so yeah. You do have to share that because they did provide a bunch of the land. However, the village's credits were increased because of their involvement, because we are able to back off buffer areas, which we don't get as much credit for. You don't get as much credit on the edges. And the moving of their driveway over to the edge of their property has also helped with hydrology. I tried to name the lake over there after them, but they didn't like that. So we'll just call it Lake Swamagon for now. And then Craig did point out to me it's at present value. So of course, everything's inflation adjusted, including how much you have to save back for maintenance, long-term maintenance. We adjusted everything to inflation. As everything rises, your profit will rise. Of course, that's your dollar's worth less when it goes up, but that's okay. That's economics for you.
So this is just the bid. This, tonight's motion would be to either approve this going out for bid or not approving it.
So this would be for putting the plans together for this stream realignment and improvements along that corridor to open up four more credits to eventual sale.
I'd like to, if I may make a motion...
By all means.
To direct staff to design and bid this stream corridor option for the village's Wetland Mitigation Bank. And thank you for not making me pronounce the name.
Second.
We got a motion on the floor by trustee Romes and a second from trustee Schneider. To direct staff to design and bid the stream corridor option for the village's Wetland Mitigation Bank. Are there any further comments or questions on this? Anyone? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, please.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Nay.
President Finrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want some useless historical knowledge?
Yes, I love that.
It's valuable. Swamagon is the French, French version of the Potawatomi name for Swamaco. There's two versions, Swamagon and Wassama Gonon. But we chose the latter.
Is that the French name or the Potawatomi name?
It's the French version of the Potawatomi name is Swamaco.
Yes.
I've got the, I've got the Dutch last name, which is the version of the Dutch last name.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
No offense intended to the French, by the way, by my inability to...
Item number eight, fire department items. Item 8A is the Fire Department Staffing Model Update and Potential Ad-Hoc Committee Chief Bertler.
Thank you, thank you. The Village of Swamaco Strategic Plan for 2024 to 2026 calls for updating the staffing model study from 2019. A committee was formed back in 2019 to kind of look at things such as wages, staffing number and, staffing numbers and potential staffing models, looking to kind of revamp this committee again and looking at, like I said, the committee would study the wages and staffing numbers. So looking for two members from the village board to be on that committee. Currently have two members from the fire commission, myself, Assistant Chiefs Gabershik and Ben Plus, and then DEO Pisani on that. So it is only, this guide is, you know, informational purposes for the village board. There's no formal action that the committee would take. It's just to provide useful guidance. And if you go back to the original study, if you look at option number one, which was recommended back 2019, we're kind of between our ideal state back then and option number one. So it does serve as a useful document. So looking for two volunteers.
I don't want to, but I want somebody that's a fiscal conservative, okay?
I had you in mind, Michelle, the entire time.
I don't want to. And please understand me, I think a fire department is awesome. I think you are awesome.
You want someone like you on the committee.
I don't want to, but I want a fiscal conservative. I want two fiscal conservatives on it.
I want one, for sure.
We'll take you.
I hope we're all fiscal conservatives.
Not compared to me.
Any other volunteers?
No one is compared to you.
It's subjective.
What, what time commitment and what's your thing?
Probably me, this committee was kind of directed by Chief, Assistant Chief Gabershik back in the day, met about four times, probably over the next two months. So probably for hour, hour and a half each night.
What day of the week?
We'll make it whatever is most...
Whatever works for Michelle.
Not on a Friday night, don't worry.
I sat on the last committee, this last committee, so I don't know that it's appropriate unless there's not another volunteer.
I'm on the finance one, so I shouldn't be greedy.
I'll help you.
Okay. I don't think we need a formal motion.
No. Who are our two volunteers? Michelle?
Trustee Eckert and...
Excuse me?
I think she said she didn't want to.
Are you kidding?
You wanted to be on it? You were on it, right?
What, did two other people?
No.
No.
You and me?
I had you in mind the entire time, Michelle.
Did you really?
I honestly did.
I'm touched. Yeah, I hope, I hope it works.
We'll make it work for you.
Okay, here we go.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
So, did I hear a yes?
Yes.
How many meetings you thinking?
There's like four.
Four meetings?
Yeah, no.
Don't get it all, no, four meetings in the next two months.
Over two months?
With refreshments?
Why don't you just jump on board and if it doesn't work out, we find somebody else?
Okay, with refreshments, I heard that.
Okay.
We'll discuss that.
We have, I'll tell you what, we have our two.
I'm in if I get a ride on the boat.
All right, we'll get you that.
All right, settle your other stuff at the first meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number nine, discussion on future agenda items. Anybody with future agenda items they'd like to have on a future agenda?
I got a couple here, Scott. Talking to Ms. Bartletti this morning. With the NFL Draft coming in, Green Bay is going to be opening up the outdoor drinking where you can walk down the road.
In that location, yeah.
And other communities are going to go with it.
Okay. Not seen that.
So you would like to, you would like to have us address that here in Swamaco?
I would.
Okay, so future agenda item for discussion?
Do you want that to Public Health and Safety? They technically oversee the liquor licensing. Does that make sense? Or you want to go straight to village board?
Oh, go to Health and Safety.
Okay. So that would be, that would be the first for the item. I'll be the second for that item for a future agenda. Okay, what else?
And on our operator licenses, we have the village-wide operator license. There is a sentence on there that I believe should be taken off. Which bar are you going to work at? If it is a village-wide, why do we have it? It just causes confusion.
Is it a...
It's one sentence.
Let's just get in on the agenda.
Like an application, you mean?
Okay. So we can review that at the...
Health and Safety, too.
Okay. Public Health and Safety Review, okay with you?
Yep.
All right, then I'll second that one as well. Anything else?
None.
All right, anyone else?
I got one.
You bet.
Someone needs to take my spot on planning and zoning because I am resigning effective at the end of next, at the end of the month.
Planning and zoning or is it...
Of this board.
I finally broke you.
It's this chair. That and Mark took my spot.
Okay.
I have to because I just got my teaching assignments for both fall and spring. Guess what time they put me at?
Mondays at six.
Yep. So I, in good conscience, I can't keep going. I mean...
Well, planning and zoning isn't on Mondays at six.
But it's a, it's a...
Trustee position.
Good thing, though.
So we can put on the agenda a discussion for how the village board wants to proceed. You'll have options, you can leave it empty. Because you are up for election next year. Well, we can talk about your options the next meeting.
So put that on the agenda and discuss options for the refilling of trustee Schneider's site seat. Sorry to hear that, but I understand.
Congratulations on your...
All right, anybody else?
Socks.
Oh, sorry.
Anybody else? Okay, if there are, if there's no further discussion, then I would like to convene to move this into closed session. Do I have a motion to move into closed, to move into closed session? Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Item one, annual village administrator performance report. And item two, finance director, do I have a motion to move into closed session?
So...
Sorry, there's also item B, which is Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Item one, union bargaining. Did I have a motion to move into closed session? That motion was given by trustee Schneider and seconded by trustee Romes. Roll call, please.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
President Finrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, we are in closed session. Who are you keeping, who are you throwing off the island?
I'm throwing everybody out.
Everybody's off the island.
I have some stuff for you.